Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner. Well, I'm gonna go with who I've got right here. Commissioner Dick.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
All right, and Commissioner Burton Falk is here in present. Welcome, everyone. This is the briefing session for the Planning Commission. Briefing means that cases are heard as a preliminary public presentation. Uh, for initial questions from the commission, public testimony is not taken at this time. A reminder to our presenters, clearly describe which slide you are presenting to assist those participating via audio. I'm going to read through the agenda items here today on briefing, and those are the following. Uh, briefing for March 7, 2023 is Agenda Item A. BCP-ZDR-2022-13062 at 600 Penn Avenue. Briefing Agenda Item B is DCP-ZDR-2022-02743 at 200 West General Robinson Street. I'm going to go back up to Agenda Item. Uh, A, and that is DCP-ZDR-2022-13062 600 Penn Avenue. That is for exterior renovations to Heinz Hall in the Central Business District downtown neighborhood. Presenting that to us here today is Mr. Gregory.
And before Mr. Gregory starts, I'll be recusing.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, before I start, could the, uh, presenters for the Heinz Hall renovations raise their hands so we can make sure that you're promoted into the, uh, they promoted, so you can speak. I'm not seeing my presenting team right now.
Maybe you'll have to reverse the order of the items.
Anyone, anyone here to present for, uh, the Heinz Hall, just put your hands up and we can promote you. All right, maybe I'll hold for a second and, uh, reach out to the applicant team just to confirm who is presenting.
All right, good. Um, I see applicants for briefing item two, um, in the attendee list, so we wanted to proceed with briefing item two first and then circle back on briefing item one.
Sounds good, Mr. Kounak. I'll read that in.
Great, thank you.
To do Agenda Item B, which is, and will return to A after. Uh, Agenda Item B is DCP-ZDR-2022-02743 at 200 West General Robinson Street. That is new construction of multi-unit residential structure. North Shore Neighborhood. Presenting that here for today is Mr. Kounak.
And good afternoon, Commissioners. Hold for one second while we admit our applicants. Thank you for raising your hand. So as we, can we do a sound check with, um, our applicants?
Hi Kevin, this is Philip Wilkinson from AE7.
Great, thank you very much. So I'll read in the briefing report and then I'll pass it over to you to, um, for the presentation. And we'll share our screen. Right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is, uh, Project Development Plan Application DCP-ZDR-2022-02743 for new construction of an 11-story multi-unit residential structure. The proposed development includes 305 dwelling units, 117 off-street parking spaces, and approximately 2,000 gross square feet of accessory retail sales um, and services uses. Uh, there's no registered community organization at this location, therefore no development activities meeting, um, is required. Uh, the Stormwater Management Plan has been submitted and received conceptual review approval. Um, this application was reviewed at staff design review and the contextual design advisory panel on September 27, 2022. The designer view summary is attached to this report. A transportation memo has been submitted and is under review by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, DOMI. Uh, this application is requesting seven performance points. Uh, the base height in the RIV NS um, zoning district is 60 feet and the max height is 150 feet. The proposed building height is approximately 130 feet. Uh, the breakdown of those proposed proposed performance points, um, are included in your presentation in your report and also reviewed in this presentation. Um, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our applicants.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Sean Fox, gonna speak on behalf of the applicant, RDC, uh, as well, and then turn this over to our architect AE7 along with our civil team, Langen. Um, it's been a little bit since we've been in front of you. This is our first virtual, but, um, RDC, we're a development investment company here in Pittsburgh, and I would say over the last six years, we've done about 300 million alongside our developers, uh, partners, investors, lenders, uh, investment into the city of Pittsburgh from new communities, mixed-use projects, commercial office buildings, and now what we are sharing with you on the North Shore. Um, just a really quick description of the site. Um, what you see there, uh, can you flip to the next slide? One more. Okay, there we go. Um, what you see is a current surface parking lot that, uh, we have site control in yellow. We do not own or control any of the adjacent parking to this facility. Uh, we will have an agreement to provide some accessory parking in addition to what we are building. Um, but what you will see here is a mixed-use project of 305 units as well as one level of structured parking. Um, we had a lot of different goals for this project and one is we truly feel that if there's a parking that you can minimize or a project you can minimize parking, this is the location for that. So we have only one level of structured parking and 2,000 square foot of retail on the ground floor, a two-story entrance and other ways to activate the street, which was obviously at this location very important to us. And on the parking and on this location, we have two other garages. We have surface parking around us and, and one of those garages connects directly to our T. Um, so we really wanted this to be a walkable transit-oriented type of development. Um, we're really excited to present it to you today. Um, a couple other things just to highlight, you know, you'll see some modern touches. We really wanted to compliment and not duplicate the architecture across the street. Um, on the first floor, the one thing that we felt at this location as an avid biker on the North Shore and using this trail as someone that lives in the North Hills, we think this is a great location to be a centralized spot for outdoor activity. And what we mean by that is we want to promote with our retail a a, a trail-type activity user, someone that's going to promote bike sharing and bike uh, rental. We are going to put in a bike uh, repair station as well as a water filling station and other outdoor bike amenities, but you know, with the trail being wide in this section and having such great access is something we are going to work to try and uh, accentuate at this location. You'll hear about our, our sustainability features and other features from our architect and from our civil. And with all of that being said, uh, Philip, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Um, my name is Philip Wilkinson from AE7 Architects. If we could go to the next slide, please. Um, the site located like Sean was describing, um, right next to PNC Park, uh, close to the intersection of Federal and West General Robinson Street. Um, we are, um, just about a five-minute walk, um, from the T, the North Shore T Station, uh, and numerous bus lines, so we really are trying to take advantage of that in reducing the overall parking um, provided on the site as it is, um, very friendly for walking and being part of the city's, uh, public infrastructure. Next slide, please. The site in yellow, um, is between, uh, the Marriott, um, and Spring Hill Suites, um, right along West General Robinson Street. Uh, what's really important, uh, when we are looking at this site is that the only access for the site is through an existing curb cut um, right along West General Robinson Street. Um, we do not have public um, access along the other side of the site, even though it's right in the center of a parking lot. And we also have 279 or 65 directly north of us. Um, so that's something that's important when we talk to the design of the building and how it relates or step backs from the highway, uh, as we develop residential units, uh, facing north. Um, next slide, please. Um, the site, um, as, um, we, uh, presented at the beginning here and going over the review of the project, uh, is in the RIV North Shore District. Um, we are looking to achieve about a 130-foot tall building. Um, we are concentrating our access off that, um, existing curb cut on West General Robinson Street. And as we develop the mass and looking to stepping the building about 50 feet off the highway, uh, which is more than the adjacent buildings as you look to the east of the site. Um, we are trying to, um, really leverage the intersection of Federal and West General Robinson Street as, you know, active edge. Uh, and really trying to pay attention to, um, activating the streetscape um, as best we can, um, facing PNC Park. Um, next slide, please. These are some views, um, of the site. You can see here it is just the existing parking lot. Um, the yellow is the approximate location of our proposed building. Next slide, please. Um, one of the things we really like about the site, um, is the view back to the city. Um, this is a view from approximately, um, the amenity level up at the top, which is about the 11th or 12th floor, uh, looking to the city skyline. We are not tall enough to see into PNC Park. Um, we're kind of, you can see here, uh, right in line with, uh, near the, the top of it. Um, but it is quite a fantastic view and then also looking back on Federal Street, um, over uh, the river, uh, to the city itself and to the cultural district. Next slide, please. Um, the views to the north and to the west are as equally as stunning to Akershire Stadium, um, as well as to just the North Shore. Um, so when we're positioning the building, we are trying to take advantage of views on all sides. Next slide, please. And the site is located, uh, in a FEMA flood zone as is most of the North Shore. Um, so we're taking steps to mitigate that, uh, as we develop the building. Next slide. Um, as part of the, uh, development of the building, um, we do have a 60-foot base allowance, um, for the RIV zoning, um, criteria. Um, we are designing the building, um, as of right, um, based on the riverfront zoning requirements. Um, some of those things include, um, the build-to line, uh, and the setback line, step backs as the building increases in its height to relate to the surrounding context, um, as well as having a maximum height of 150 feet. So this blue box is kind of what we're designing within, um, to, uh, develop the, uh, 305 units for the building. And what's really important as well, um, Rachel also talked about this, uh, when we looked at the site. Um, this red zone right in front of the building here is a 10-foot easement. There is a PWSA um, sewer line running right across the front of the site in board of the sidewalk. It is a non-documented easement, but that sewer line does exist there on the site, so we're setting back the building, um, to avoid that sewer line. Um, it's approximately a 10-foot zone. Um, and we're using that to our advantage to add additional seating, additional green space, additional landscape and some bike parking, um, to really activate, um, a West General Robinson Street at the base of our building. Next slide, please. Um, as we talked about here, um, we are going for seven, uh, performance points for RIV zoning criteria. Um, we're welcome to go into details, uh, on these if you have any questions. We have reviewed these with, um, city staff and the planning staff, uh, at great length. Um, and we have a few slides later in the presentation that highlights some of the elements that we're going for, um, like including, um, the, uh, riverfront, um, access elements, trails and amenities. Next slide. This goes into the detail of these. Next slide. Uh, and one more, please. Um, this goes into the bike hub and Sean, I don't know if you wanted to quickly, um, talk about this and we can get into the details of this as we go later on into the presentation.
Yeah, no, just one comment here is, again, this is probably the area of the trail system in Pittsburgh I utilize the most with my children, a little bit older now, but um, I noticed in recent that, you know, the Venture Outdoor Bike Rental location and, uh, has gone away underneath the Clemente Bridge there and to me, if you're coming in as a destination from the suburbs, for example, to use the trail system, I ob- I obviously thought of the North Shore one because there's parking and two, you, you have features down there. You have water steps, you have things to see, you have a wider trail um, right along the river there. It doesn't get very narrow, so it's easy to use for kids and um, what we want to do is really activate this corner with what we're calling sort of a non-game day type of use and you know, we, we firmly believe the North Shore has become a non-game day destination and we want to accentuate sort of the outdoor experience from, you know, we've talked with, uh, Healthy Ride about putting in a permanent spot for this, similar to Glass House did. There's a little bit more of something you can pay for as a developer that um, we've committed to, to have this be a location for them. We've been working with DOMI to make sure if people are on the trail, they know how to get off of it and access this place to fill your water bottle, to use the public restroom, to use the repair shop and really going to go after a retail user to not duplicate a lot of the game day retail that's out there, you know, users like over the bar or uh, Cadence Clubhouse, et cetera, and make this more of an outdoor centered theme around our retail and street-level presence.
Great, appreciate that. Thank you, Sean. Um, can we advance the slide, please? Next slide. Um, this is just kind of speaking to the site again. It's about 55,000 square feet. Next slide. Um, so this is showing the, uh, initial kind of H-plan massing that we're developing for the building and then ultimately articulating and designing. Um, the H-plan is divided in kind of two north-south wings. Those wings are meant to be in scale in context of the surrounding North Shore buildings. And so not trying to put the entire mass of the building right up along West General Robinson Street. Um, the center bar between the two, um, kind of sides of the H um, is open to the south and that is designed to be a terrace for um, the residents of the building itself. Uh, and it faces south to take advantage, uh, of sun, so, um, the sun where we do have it in Pittsburgh, uh, is shining brightly in the court and, and lighting that. Um, and then the backside on 279, um, keeping that, um, middle bar between the H, um, setback provides some context and scale, um, to break down the overall mass of the building. Uh, and you'll all be this, be able to see this in the, um, the pedestrian level views. Next slide. Um, so what we are doing with the building is this H-plan is then trying to orient and articulate the facades, positioning those views for units towards the views, towards those, um, skyline views, um, towards the street, towards the North Shore or to the west. And we are also trying to position the side units that have almost faceted, um, views. So if you do have a unit on the east side uh, facing Spring Hill Suites, you're still able to have a glancing view to the city. And so those are ordering themselves, um, in around the building and then you'll see in the articulation of the facade. Next slide, please. To take that one step further, um, we are, um, working with the step backs required for riverfront zoning. Um, we, you know, we reviewed that in detail, um, in CDEP, um, and that was something that they appreciated our response to following the guidelines for setup, uh, for the building. Um, to further activate the streetscape, we're taking those two H bars of the building um, and bringing them down to ground so it feels like those are kind of mini buildings that do touch the ground themselves. And they were separating it by what you see in blue there, uh, which is a, you know, a green wall, um, that is screening the parking upgrade and then relating to the green terrace above for the residents of the building. Next slide, please. On this image on the left, um, I wanted to point out, um, this is just kind of a further development, kind of showing how we are pushing and pulling the building. Um, but the element in orange is what Sean was just talking to, that, um, retail and F and B um, opportunity about 2,000 square feet, um, for, uh, kind of a, a venture or the bike crew. Um, next to that, we have a, a double high entry to the building. I'm really trying to accentuate the ability to move up vertically as well as kind of a grand entry facing the street. Um, so the primary entry is off of West General Robinson Street and to try and keep that as active as possible, uh, during, during the day and night. Next slide, please. Um, sun studies for the site, um, because the building, um, has only the highway to the north of it. There's very minimal impact um, on any, um, existing residents around it if there's, there's no residential units, uh, next to us. Next slide. Using showing the fall and winter, um, long shadows in the winter, um, as expected on the site. And there's no shadowing of West General Robinson Street. Next slide. So this is the view, um, of the building, kind of an aerial view, looking down, seeing everything in context here. We have several views describing the building and showing the building kind of in its, in its rounds since it's seen both from the highway and the street, um, as well as from surrounding, um, uh, hotels looking down on it. Um, so we are articulating this with, um, a masonry facade. Um, we have two tones, a kind of a dark and a light brick responding to um, the materials found throughout the district in the North Shore, uh, more of a contemporary way. Uh, we're highlighting, um, the roofs that you're looking down onto, um, with either, uh, you know, cedum trays or active, um, pauses for the residents, um, to, uh, kind of really activate and, and green the roofs. Um, that will be part of our stormwater mitigation strategy. Um, I'll talk to a little bit later in the presentation. Um, you do see, um, activity on all levels through balconies, um, as well as an upper-level amenity zone, uh, for the residents of the building as well. Next slide, please. Um, our inspiration, um, like I was pointing out, really comes from the North Shore, the use of masonry materials. Um, next to us, we have PNC Park, which is kind of a life buff and then, uh, a blue metal, um, we're kind of using that kind of two stone or two-tone representation within our building, but in the contemporary, um, use of, um, kind of light and dark brick. Um, using kind of inspiration from the idea of a green wall on the site. Um, and then balancing that to the public way, um, along West General Robinson Street. Next slide, please. We spent a lot of time working on, um, the, the ground plane or the public realm you see in the first 15 feet, first two stories of the building. Um, we really liked the idea of bringing the buildings down and separating it through the green wall up screening the garage, really extending this idea of this 10-foot setback in the landscape, um, activating it through street furniture, street trees, uh, and appropriate materials for an urban streetscape. Um, item five here is pointing out the double high lobby. This is that inspiration image as that kind of a feature atrium moving up in the project off the street level. Um, and then we have some bike fix-it stations that Sean was pointing out. We do have some publicly accessible restrooms that are part of the RIV zoning performance points. Um, and then activation of the side clock. Next slide, please. Um, this is a pedestrian view, um, from across the street, um, next to PNC Park. Um, you can see how, um, we have the corner of the building is activated through balconies, um, for residents to view into the city. I'm activating the corner with the street-level retail and two-level activation in the, um, corner of the building. Next slide, please. Um, showing the building at night, um, we are really trying to activate the street level um, throughout both day and night. And then we're using some minor lighting that will work with the dark sky requirements as we develop the building um, on some of the, the larger, um, architectural moves in the building, emphasizing the volumes of the building itself. Next slide. Um, kind of closer in views, kind of this idea of this, this bike hub, um, that will show you in the plan as we move forward. Next slide, please. Um, kind of night again. Next slide, please. Um, closer in to, um, the zone between the two buildings. Um, we had a lot of discussion with CDEP on the kind of materials and the planting materials to stay alive, um, uh, in this zone and not die, which are kind of some other facades have done this in the city. Um, we are also using, um, when we have the entry to the parking for the residents, um, tactile visual and audio signals to protect pedestrians. And we are tabling up, so we are keeping the streets, um, the sidewalk as the priority, uh, pedestrians and then tabling up to that with, um, our parking access. Uh, and that will be a, um, a garage door inside the zone there, so we can pull the cars as far in as possible off the street, uh, and not blocking the sidewalk of any, for any pedestrians that are walking past the building itself. The street trees you see here are part of the existing street trees and the curb is also in the same location, um, that the current curb park is located. Um, we are providing universal access, um, and, and, and accessibility for the building um, throughout, um, to all units, um, from the street all the way through up until the, uh, 12th floor. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is kind of the west corner view. Um, we do have, um, some future proofing that we are allowing for to convert, uh, parking to active retail if, um, there is the market for doing that. Um, you can see here, this is the, the current design scenario. Uh, next slide, please. We'll show how to activate that. Um, if that has ability to become retail and North Shore, we know there is a lot of retail right now. Um, so we're trying to activate it with the east corner, the 2,000 square feet, and then this is a future proofing, uh, if there is that viability in the future, uh, to have retail to continue to activate this streetscape itself. Next slide, please. Some, uh, views around. This is showing the west view and there could be a building designed to the west of us, and we are again trying to um, provide some balconies and views for those units facing PNC Park and the North Shore as well as to the west. Next slide, please. Um, views again, um, straight into the building from across the street. Next slide, please. This view is kind of if you were up in the park, looking back at the building and what you would see. And we're very mindful that, you know, it's not just the street level, but kind of the upper levels looking down the building. Um, so this building really is seen in the round on all facades as well as looking down on its, um, kind of terrace levels. Next slide, please. Um, overall aerial, again, seeing the, the project in context. Next slide. Some additional views. Um, what we really liked about this is this kind of responding to the urban context and kind of rhythm of the street and the massing of the buildings. Um, and we do not position the entire mass of the building right on West General Robinson Street, so give it kind of rhythm and scale and interest, uh, as you're moving down and relating to the overall volume metrics for the North Shore. Next slide, please. Um, this is a view, um, on the north side of the building. Uh, we are minimizing, um, the balconies on the north side as it's right open to the highway. We have a few Juliet's to help further articulate. Um, but we're providing expansive glass and views throughout as well as on the north side. Um, as those are still some nice hill views, um, just like the city views itself. And we're setting back the building about 50 feet from the highway, which is further back than the buildings to the east of us. Yeah. Next slide, please. Um, we have all four elevations illustrating all of the materials. Um, using high-quality materials throughout is the base requirement to, you know, develop a building within, in the, uh, front zoning. Um, we're primarily using, um, two-color bricks, um, a kind of a dark brick and a light brick, um, aluminum windows, um, and then we have a couple different metal panel colors working within the system itself. And then accent materials throughout. On then accent materials throughout for some of the screening. Uh and some of the minor elements including balconies uh and the terrace in the building itself. Um the overall building um is just under a hundred and thirty five, a hundred and thirty feet. Um which would allow us to uh achieve that with seven riverfront performance points. Next slide, please. Um the other elevations, this is showing that deep set back from the highway. Next slide, please. Um north elevation. Next slide, please. Uh the west elevation, next slide. Um this is illustrating materials, um the quality of the brick, the windows, the metal panel colors and some of the accent materials throughout. Next slide, please. Um and this is just kind of an overall summary, um we worked um with the city as well as CDEP to make sure the building. Um was adhering to and responding to um zoning requirements. Um using all the materials that is are allowed uh and working with your overall architectural character. Uh to create something response to as context in a uh modern kind of contemporary way of looking at this. Um the district within the city. Next slide, please. Slide. Um so this we have, I think, Rachel and Chris from Langen to talk about the site.
Thanks, Phil. Uh can you guys hear me? I want to make sure.
Yes, we can.
It's always tough when you got to follow Phil and his pretty pictures, and then you got to talk about traffic, and I don't have the pretty pictures, so bear with me. Um thankfully, it's a pretty easy uh quick story. Uh I'm Chris Prisk, I'm a traffic engineer with Langen. Uh working on this project. Kevin mentioned that we already submitted a transportation memo. Um but we actually also just got approval from that memo, so I appreciate Katie kind of doing a quick turnaround um for that on us. Um the the high levels of uh this project uh traffic wise is, you know, basically it used to be. Two hundred and twenty-two surface parking spaces. Um and now that's going to be, you know, converted into uh, you know, mid-rise uh residential, and so from a traffic standpoint. The amount of vehicles that were coming to the site in the morning and leaving um from a surface parking use. To now this residential building, it's going to be a reduction in traffic uh during. The normal AM PM peak hours, um so good news there. Um the amount of parking spaces that are provided is less than what was currently uh provided. The amount of bicycle spaces that are going to be provided is more. Um and then if you think about it from an event standpoint, uh during events, this used to be, you know. Again, filled to the capacity two hundred uh plus for events coming and going at the same time, that's no longer going to going to be the case as well. So a reduction there um during events. Uh i- in the memo, one of the things that was uh uh questioned. Was a about event uh access and implications. And uh we have a a lot of history down there, we've we've been uh. Doing traffic event management for Accra Sure Stadium now for ten plus years and for PNC Park for about five plus years. Um and so either me or or somebody from my staff has kind of observed uh event operations. It sounds crazy, but at least a hundred and fifty plus, um so we're we're very familiar with what happens down there. And um, you know, this reduction in vehicular traffic will just improve operations um on an event standpoint. Uh as well as, you know, there's uh adequate access uh that's provided for the facility. Uh again, one thing that kind of highlight is, you know, the access for uh the building is the existing curb cut off of West General Robinson Street. There may be another slide coming up that I could talk to in a little bit more detail, but in in general, that kind of summarizes the traffic components. Um and so I think if we go to the next slide, then Rachel can pick it up.
Yep, Rachel McKeon from Langen Engineering, I'm the site civil engineer for the project. Um so this area, the North Shore is very gently sloped, and we're going to be continuing that. Um we'll continue to have ADA accessibility throughout to all the doors around the building. Um next slide, please. Um as Philip mentioned, um there is a PWSA utility line that runs along the front of our building. So um we are going to be utilizing the ten-foot build-to-zone to add an additional green space and urban space in front of our building. Those plannings will be coordinated with PWSA, and the urban space and green space also adds. A nice uh space for residents and the public to utilize some seating area in front of our retail space. As well as adding some additional greenery in front of the building. And then as Philip mentioned before, we will be preserving all of the existing street trees that are in front of our building. Slide, please. And then back to you, Philip.
Sure, sure, we can skip over this slide, it's addressed in the next slide. Um our ground floor plan, um it's some things to point out here in yellow is that retail space we've talked about several times. Um we have an enlargement to talk about the bikes um and the trail restrooms. Um in blue is the public, um you know, rival and activation for the apartment lobby. Um working across the building from. Uh right to left, then we have the entry that we talked about. Um this is uh meant to be a tabled zone to we're coming up to the height of the sidewalk. Um in a striped and tactile as well as audio, uh potentially visual strobe to indicate that a car is coming in or out. Uh and then there's a small uh essentially one car space, so you can pull all the way in. Off of the sidewalk and not block the sidewalk if you're getting into the building. This is our primary entry and exit to the building and then circling around on the ground level. Uh and then to the the far left, um we have a shaded zone, we'll show in some additional slides how we are future-proofing that. Um the general service to the building, we are providing a trash room within the building. Um providing access for residents to move in, um and we do have some additional spaces um on the north side of the building. Um that um are accessed from the the exterior of the building. Um and so we're trying to keep all of that service to the back of the building and activating West General Robinson Street as best we can. Next slide, please. Um this is showing the locations for bikes, primarily we have them on the east side of the project, um which would be accessible um from a small. Um sort of uh lane to this uh east side of the project, uh next to the retail uh hub. We have the public restrooms, then access door for the residents to store bikes. Um and then we have some secondary locations, all in, um we have about a hundred and three bike parking spaces uh for the project. Next slide, please. Um so this is showing how we are trying to achieve uh and will achieve riverfront zoning point for the trail-y, trail-oriented. Um uh amenities, um so we will be designing some restrooms that work well, um that are safe. Um and accessible um for uh the public to use as part of that. Um connection with the North Shore Trail, outdoor bike spaces as well as some potential um locations to uh fix or repair your bike. Next slide, please. Um this is a a future-proofing, um part of the riverfront performance points is ability to convert the garage to. Uh non-parking uses. Um we are creating the left side to be potentially anywhere from two to eight thousand square feet of additional retail space. Um if the market is there for the retail space. Um we are locating all building elements outside of this that are dealing with any sort of mechanical or electrical or transformer requirements. Um so that could be easily converted to a retail or F and B or um commercial use. Next slide, please. Uh this is a bit extreme, but at least showing you how this could actually, you know, occur if this was, you know, a viable. Adjustment to reducing the parking requirement heavily on how we could achieve that, um this is. Um provided in great discussion um with city planning staff to how to achieve the the performance point for uh future proofing the garage itself. Next slide, please. Um the second level, uh which is the first residential level, uh has a primary amenities for the residents. Um really just one level off the street, trying to really stay connected with the street. And then activating the um roof space over the parking below um with some um. Uh lawn space and amenities for the residents, uh and then some green roof or cedum roofs around. Where you're looking back down on the roof to help mitigate uh the stormwater requirements for the building. Um we have a series of um studios, ones and two beds, you go to next slide, please. Um we have three hundred and five units, um we have both type A and type B units. Um so the units will be fully accessible, and about two percent of the units will be type A units. Next slide, please. Um just getting to the detail on the parking, um we are um providing hundred seventeen spaces, uh mixed between standard and compact spaces. Um so we are uh meeting the requirements, you can go into detail for any questions, uh and then doing the same for the bike parking. Um total bike spaces that we are achieving um is a hundred and three uh bike spaces, we did pick up. Um you know, one additional one through here, does any questions happen to go through this in more detail? Next slide, please. Um and then back to you, Chris, I think this is um something on trip generation, you briefly talked about this, but this was in detail.
Sure, thanks, Phil. Um yeah, this just kind of lays out um existing condition when it was surface spaces, uh two hundred and twenty-two. You can see a heavy influx of vehicles uh during the AM peak hour and then uh leaving in the PM peak hour. Which kind of aligns with kind of commuter uh parking dynamics. And then the proposed use, you know, it's much more evenly spread out with the in and out uh mix. And you can see it's a a reduction in the AM peak and uh. Almost a wash in the PM, so that's why you can kind of conclude it's uh reduction overall during the peak hours. Um that's about it on that one, Phil.
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide. Um I believe uh the ownership group, I think John, you're going to speak to construction management plan. Sean or John, are you guys there?
Uh your mic, we can't hear you, Mr. Deco.
Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Good afternoon, uh working with our consultant Langen and Chris Prisk, uh who is also the consultant for the SEA Steelers and Pirates. We've developed a construction management plan that entails uh site safety and security. Basically fencing the entirety of our site staging from the adjacent private lot. Uh we do not intend to close General Robinson Street at any point, uh but we will close the sidewalk uh along General Robinson Street. Uh to ensure the safety of the public. Uh so, as we all know, we've been living with construction on the North Shore for many years. Uh I think all in all, Langen and the contractors have done a pretty good job there, uh we intend to do the same. Uh our plan is here in front of you, and it will be further refined as we go forward with uh DOMI and uh the various stakeholders on the North Shore. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Um this is just highlighting some of the sustainable points that align uh with our overall project. Yeah, I'm kind of of goals as well as the riverfront points as well as the requirement from the city. You know, some of those are dealing with the stormwater requirements, um Rachel will speak to that in just a minute here. Um really reducing energy in line with a twenty thirty uh and the requirements for the riverfront zoning uh one point. Um ample um green space as well as vegetated roofs. Um and really looking to mitigate that stormwater uh discharge into the city system. We'll have a series of U V charging stations and then uh numerous other elements that will contribute to this overall reduction in this carbon footprint. Next slide, please.
So for this, I'm sorry, Phil.
Yep, go ahead, Rachel.
Um so for the stormwater management, as Philip mentioned, we will be utilizing an eighteen thousand gallon cistern. The cistern will be utilized to irrigate the plaza area as well as the green wall that's being used to screen the parking area. As well as a water feature and flushing the um trail bathrooms that are located on the ground floor. Um on top of that, we are also utilizing a um large underground detention vault located to the north of the building. Um all of the roof areas that are not draining to the cistern will be collected and will be. Held for seventy-two hours, being slowly released to the thirty-six inch pipe located along West General Robinson. That is a separate storm system. Next slide, please. Um this is kind of an overview just to show that we are meeting all of the requirements for the city of Pittsburgh. And the bonus points as well as the state code requirements. We designed it using the climate change rainfall data per the new um city of Pittsburgh um stormwater management. Requirements. Next slide, please. Um this is just the narrative in case, um we want to go into more details when we get to questions. Next slide, please. Um same thing, um this is just showing that we use the um pre-development rainfall intensity of today versus the post-development rainfall. You can see that we increased it per the climate change um rainfall data. Next slide, please. Um and then if you look at the overall rate table, you can see that we are reducing um the overall. Um stormwater that is leaving our site from approximately one C, one and a half CFS to three CFS. Um next slide, please. Um so this is kind of an overview of what we modeled for our pre and post conditions. You can see the site as it exists today is almost a hundred percent impervious area. And then you can see how we modeled our proposed land use as also almost all impervious. As you've seen earlier from our renderings, we do have a lot of green space and vegetative roofs that we did not. Model um as a conservative measure. Uh we didn't want to risk those areas being double counted since we're using our cistern to water those areas. But we will still be getting the full benefits of the vegetated roof for things like um heat reduction and then also with helping with the water quality. Next slide, please. Um and then again, this is kind of uh the existing watershed map versus what we're proposing in the existing condition. Currently, the entire site has no stormwater management controls and is draining directly to. The PWSA sewer that is also, I believe, a combined sewer system. So our proposed site is going to be capturing the entire roof area. Um the area in purple or blue is going to be draining to our cistern. While the areas in yellow will be draining to our underground detention system. And then all of that um yellow and blue area will be slowly released and or reused on site. Um and then um discharging into the thirty-six inch pipe, um that is a separate storm sewer along West General Robinson Street. Next slide, please.
So that concludes um our presentation, I think, um Sean or John, if you guys like to um finish with any closing comments. And then we'd be uh looking forward to any questions you may have.
And for uh allowing us present and look forward to any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh this is the briefing, so at this time, there is no public testimony. But commissioners, uh this is our opportunity to ask questions, make comments. Uh or any requests from the applicants. Commissioner Dick, it looks like you have your hand up.
Okay, just several short que- short questions. Uh am I correct in assuming that there is no plan for including any? For affordable units in this project? That they're all marketed, uh right?
I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to talk about that, we were trying to keep to the schedule on our unit plans, but if you saw and went through. Uh when you go through our unit plans, one thing that we tried to do here is. Uh we're doing a a much higher percentage of studios and smaller one bedrooms at this location. And it goes all the way up to larger two bedrooms, and I I say that because. For projects that we have done or others, y- you don't have such a wide variety of sizes. Um and the reason for that is a couple of different reasons. One, we we definitely are keeping units on the smaller side, so we will have units from the eighty to a hundred percent of AMI. Based on the size of our units and um because we do project a much younger demographic here. Um but then, as you get up to the top floors of this eleven-story building, which is also unique for Pittsburgh to go high-rise. We are doing some larger two bedrooms because one, that is. We're seeing a little bit more demand for those in the market, and also we want to take advantage of those views and um. Um but also, anyone that moves into this location is going to want to be in the game day action and want to. Um you know, deal with all of that excitement, uh good or bad uh for depending on your viewpoint. So we will have units in the eighty to a hundred percent AMI range, you know, we are still evaluating. You know, we are still evaluating all of the new programs that are out there that the city has, that the state has. Um, but at this point, we're not projecting anything in the fifty percent AMI range. But right now, the way it is to finance a project, which is incredibly difficult, some of these new city programs, including Alerta may, um, may allow us to actually look at this from a different perspective and be creative on our financing. So, um, right now, we know we're going to have units in eighty to a hundred percent AMI range based on the size. And we're continuing to look at all of the programs out there to, uh, get more creative in our financing as well and provide more affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more short questions. Uh, where's the cistern located?
We're still finalizing the location of the cistern, but it'll likely be located underneath the building in the parking area. Um, but we're still coordinated with the MEP where the best spot will be to, um, pump that water up to the second floor plaza area.
Okay. Okay. Uh, does this project have a working title? Or the building, name of the building?
Sean, do you want to answer that?
Uh, it's, you know, if we've, we've been down a road as we ran into some major utility issues on the site, so I think we forgot to name it. We're just.
Okay.
West General. The name right now, yeah.
Okay. And the last question, uh, how did you mesh the requirements for floodproofing the lower areas of building with the requirements for accessibility for all entrances?
Sure, that's, that's a great question. Um, we have limited uses on the ground level for the residents. Um, so most of the amenities are all the upper level. The only thing that's going to be really on the ground level will be, you know, the entry, the lobby and the mail. Uh, it's required to be there. All the other units for the build, uh, amenities will be up in the building. So what's really left will be the, um, the parking for the building. Um, and then we're exploring floodproofing measures, uh, for the facade for the retail space itself.
But all, but all entrances are accessible.
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Uh, any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Mingo.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Um, so I had a couple of things, there are a couple of things I do appreciate about this building. I appreciate that your use, your use of bricks and the use of materials to try and make this more substantial, um, building, especially in this, in this area as it relates to the building around it. Um, so I think it'll have a nice feeling of a, of a longevity, um, that goes, goes with this building. I also appreciate your willingness to listen to the contextual advisory board. Um, I appreciate their opinions. Um, and as a commissioner, I think it's always nice when the architects and the development group, um, actually take the advice of the contextual divi- advisory group. Um, I also appreciate the use of floor-mounted bicycles, especially outside in a park area where not everybody's bicycle is, um, is, is vertical or can be made vertical that easily. It is a more accessible solution. Um, I, I wanted to go, could we go to the slide where the, it's the trail, um, the site plan that sort of talks about the trail amenities? I guess sort of later in the slideshow. I don't know who's in charge of the slides.
That's, that's page fifty-four.
Yes, I don't know if that's Kevin or who's making the slides happen.
I think it's Kevin.
Thank you.
I have them up on another monitor, but that's not the one you can see.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is slide.
Thank you. Yeah, perfect. Um, so I had a, a couple of questions here. First, um, you did mention and tried to perhaps explain this and I wasn't quite focused yet on what you were trying to tell me. But, um, it is unfortunate that the driveway has to be on West Robinson Street, considering that you're in an island of, um, parking here. Why is that? And what, what would it take to make that not happen?
I mean, I, I can answer that. Um, this is, this is Sean Fox with RDC. Unfortunately, we only have site control of that yellow box that you saw on the, on these slides. Um, the, the, the landowner that we are purchasing this site from controls the rest of the site. Um, so this is our only access to a public street. Um, you know, we are going to have an access agreement with our, uh, with the adjacent property owner to circulate around our building, but he has the ability to move that into the future. Um, so for example, if we somehow did not have an entrance off West General Robinson Street and there was access off an adjacent private property owners, um, real estate, in their mind, that future site could be developed in the future. Um, you know, it could be rearranged. There are some major utility issues, I would say, on that site as well, which kind of made us, you know, take this long. I think we were planning to be in front of you guys almost a year ago, but had to deal with some of those utility issues ourselves. So right now, unfortunately, this is our only access to a public street, which is why we need to have that entrance located on West General Robinson.
Okay, thank you. I, uh, I appreciate that explanation. Um, there are some, yeah. And then, so my other question is, on this trail amenities map on the, what is that? The eastern side, there's surface parking. Does that surface parking belong to you?
So that surfing park, um, does not belong to us. That's part of the hotel's surface parking. So, um, that's, you know, that lot line is essentially, um, a lot line between two parcels and, uh, does not belong to us.
Okay. And so the, on the drawings that you have, I don't want to change the drawings because I have more questions about this slide. But there are some drawings at the beginning of this presentation, which talk about the exterior public realm strategy. And it shows trees and lawn where that park, where the parking is, and that's not part of your project. And are there more, are there trees there that belong to the hotel or there are no trees? So that.
And, and just, just to clarify something that Philip said, that is the existing condition that you see. Um, it's, it is on the property that we are purchasing and, um, part of that, this parking needs to be either reconfigured to a certain degree or needs to be relocated. Um, that is the agreement with these two hotels with the, the previous owner of the parcels that we are buying this from. So I think that green space, Philip, was just sort of a placeholder. Um, you know, as it relates to the rendering, but what you're seeing here is the actual current, um, existing condition.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so we're building right up to the lot line. Um, wh- what happens with the hotel is to be determined. There is some existing trees there that are interspersed between the parking spaces near the port cochere. Uh, and that's what we kind of indicatively shown in the, the renderings of the, the building. Um, the site plans and the plot plans, um, are the design in which we are, uh, looking to have approved.
And, and then on this drawing also, it just shows four, six outdoor public seats or little outdoor tables. Is that, is that?
I mean, it's, it's indicative. I mean, um, we would hope to have a retailer that could have potentially open shop front windows. Um, and, um, a series of seats out there, um, to be coordinated with the, the retailer or the cafe or the restaurant themselves. Um, we will have a series of different benches and other elements within the landscape outside the front door here to activate this east corner, um, you see here in line with the lobby or, you know, a, a public entry, um, that you would anticipate seeing.
Are, are you planning to rent this at below market value? I know you spoke about some more local oriented retailers and or restaurants, um, which often cannot afford sort of typical market rate, um, project. I also know that you're anticipating and sort of getting credit for the trail oriented retail. So are you planning to underwrite this retail in order to get a trail oriented retail? Or are you going to leave it vacant until you find somebody who can pay?
You know, I would say, you know, the one thing about having retail, you know, we, we thought a lot about retail at this location, Commissioner, and, um, it, it's a, it's kind of a tale to retail, uh, stories on the North Shore. Um, you know, the, the retail on this end obviously has a lot to do more with the, um, servicing the, the pirates in the baseball stadium where the retail, as you get further down toward stage AE, um, becomes a little bit more steely oriented, but now obviously you have Southern Tier and, um, some of the other, um, retailers like, uh, Shorty's Buys and Pints, if I said that right, that have become destination. Um, so at this, at this size of retail, which we thought was a good size, it's, you know, the, the income from this part of the retail at two thousand square feet is not going to make or break our financial underwriting of the project. And for us, making this special and making it truly feel as if it is a place for outdoors enthusiasts to gather, um, you know, uh, bicycle enthusiasts to gather, making it appeal to them so that on non-game days, people want to congregate here and, you know, work with the hotels. So we're providing bike maps to them and, and, and making sure that this becomes a little bit of a center of outdoors enthusiast, enthusiasts for the North Shore is sort of the intent here. And so I would say at this size, you know, we're able to be creative and, and how and who we, we, we rent that space to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I think that, that I agree with you. It would be wonderful to have something like this, um, on the North Shore. I just know that it's hard to make the numbers work. So thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo. Um, other commissioners or there, Commissioner O'Neil?
I have a follow-up on Commissioner Mingo's question regarding kind of the site boundaries. I thought I was on the same page, but I think I just need to nail that down a little bit. If we could, please go to slide eighteen. And so I understand you're either ground leasing or purchasing this property from the current owner. Um, it's part of a larger parcel. So right now, when I'm looking at this current configuration, there's a row of parking to plan, right? And then there's a row of parking to plan left. But on your drawings, you're showing kind of your sidewalk extending beyond that to either the existing drive on the right or another drive on the left. Do you know what those future conditions are? Is it possible that there would be somebody parking right against your building?
So, Sean, why don't I take it first? So, um, when you look at the building, we, we do are offsetting the building. If you went to page, um, fifty-two, um, you'll see that our sides of the building do not come technically right to the site. We are setting in from that. So we do have some offset from if there is future parking. So the out, the large red line outline, you can see there, um, on the right of the project, we do, are setting back from this. We're not right at the parking. Um, you can see here.
How much is that setback?
Um, I don't know exactly. I think it's the neighborhood of about five feet. The site is not exactly square. Um, so it might be five feet, four to five feet front and it tapers slightly towards the back on the east side. On the west side, it's the same, and then we're taking advantage of that for a little bit of that sawtooth, and you can see at the upper levels.
And so I guess I'm just a little bit confused. Um, so if we go to slide fifty-four, kind of zooming in on this, right now to plan right, um, there's this row of parking. You said you have this five-foot setback. Um, there's a row of parking. I don't know that this is entirely accurate here because it seems like there's row of parking. And then when I look at maps, a strip of landscape or curb and then.
So that's right, Commissioner, just to jump in. So what, what you are seeing at that fifty-four thousand square feet, I believe, Philip, is the building footprint. Am I saying that correctly? Or the podium footprint with the sidewalks? We are actually purchasing a little bit of a larger site, would includes that existing condition. Um, parking would need to be reconfigured as you see it and either flipped so that you're, there's a curb there and you're pulling into it, obviously not up against our sidewalk. Or under the agreements that are in place with the seller of this property to us, that he has a place with the other hotel owners, it would be relocated, um, which there's obviously parking. If you look at this entire section of property directly behind that hotel, uh, underneath the five seventy-nine and other areas that the seller of this property to us has the site control of. So, um, it's a little deceiving as you're looking at it here because it's showing the exact existing condition. But the site we are purchasing actually includes that. Um, and I think it goes a little farther west as well. Uh, but obviously there'd be curbs and other things to protect that sidewalk to make sure people can access the sidewalk safely and, um, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So I, I think that helps. I, I think one last question, if we could go to slide thirty-eight. At least on, one last question on this. I understood that, you know, you don't have site control of the existing hotel to the plan right. And that those trees may or not be there, may or may not be there, that's not part of your site. But that kind of strip of landscaping, that is or is not part of your, under your site control.
I, I think that stretch of green space, there's a little ambitious at this point. Um, because that is where that parking sits, that landscaping of those trees actually does exist though. I would say on the eastern side of that, Philip, am I saying that right?
Correct. So you see those trees directly to the left side of their, um, port cochere entry. You see just a little bit of it and then you have the, the road. Those trees exist. Um, between those trees in the building where we are showing a green strip is a bit, um, kind of visionary. Um, that is not under control, whether that turns back to parking or turns into some sort of, um, other treatment is to be determined at this point.
Okay, so, but it's not ambitious and I'm not committing you to anything. But as of right now, it's not under your control to program or say what would be fair. Okay.
Right.
All right.
We, we can update that too. Yeah, I know. We can update that. When we come back, we apologize for, um, any sort of, um, gray area that we've caused between.
I understand that maybe that's in future plans. It just makes us second guess which one is which and adds to more, more questions for you. Um, so thank you for clearing that up.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and, and that is a TBD and, and, you know, appreciate that.
Perhaps next time we see you, if you could update the public realm site that you're selling us on to make it more accurate of what we're actually going to get, that would be super helpful.
And then I think my follow-up question was with regards to the West General Robinson kind of pedestrian experience. So we saw existing conditions and how kind of PNC Park, um, exists currently across the street. But I wasn't exactly sure. I know that PNC Park is taller than your building. But the built portion of PNC Park closest to your building is only three or four stories. And I was just wondering, I, I can't grasp how that matches in context to your building. So if we could get a view kind of down west General Robinson that shows, you know, the heights, some sort of height there building and how it corresponds with your building. Um, I think that would also help tie together. You showed some of the buff color of the brick in your, in your drawings, and I, I think that would help us understand how those relate to each other.
Yep, we, yeah, we gladly provide those. I'm trying to see if I was unmuted or not. Apologize. Um, yeah, we can definitely provide those views.
And then I, I think my final question is, parking only assigned to residences and residents and the retailer, would it be open to other people?
Uh, no, no other parking. Um, we just don't have, uh, uh, we don't have enough spots, unfortunately. So it would all be for the residents.
Okay. Um, that, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No, no additional questions.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Uh, if there are no additional questions at this time, uh, which commissioners, it doesn't look as if there are, then I'd like to thank the applicant and, uh, we'll see you back in two weeks. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time and thank you for the, uh, questions.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, moving on to agenda item, um, A, because we went to B first. Agenda item A under briefing is DCP dash ZDR dash twenty twenty-two dash one three zero six two at six hundred Penn Avenue. That's exterior renovations to Heinz Hall in the Central Business District Downtown Neighborhood. Presenting that is Mr. Gregory.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, before I start, I'd like to do a quick sound check with our presenter, uh, Tom Pierce, and also confirm that we have everyone from the applicant team.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yeah, I can hear you. All right, we're all set. I'll do a quick uh introduction and turn it over to you. All right, so uh, this is an application for exterior renovations at six hundred Penn Avenue. I don't know if it's Heinz Hall. The application is uh extensive repair, window replacement, terracotta replacement and lighting improvements on the uh Penn, on the buildings, Penn Avenue and Sixth Street sides. As the total uh cost of exterior renovations exceeds two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the project is before the commission as a project development plan. Uh, there were no requests to design board adjustment for this case. Uh, the proposed restorative work was reviewed by design staff uh in January twenty twenty-three and design staff accepted everything as proposed. Uh, the uh development team had a development activities meeting uh virtually with the downtown partnership, the downtown uh neighborhood specialty community organization on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, report will be included with the hearing and action report uh in two weeks. And uh with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to walk us through uh the project.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you for allowing us to present to you today. Appreciate that opportunity. Uh, we also regret that we weren't able to log on uh at the original time, so. This is uh the beginning of our presentation. And uh, could we go to the next slide, please? And uh, we're working uh with the Symphony and Mascaro Construction. And our engineer for the work is uh CJL Engineering. Next slide, please. The uh, you're probably very familiar with Heinz Hall, but it originally was a uh a Lowe's Theater uh that started uh operations in nineteen twenty-six. And then uh in nineteen sixty-four, I believe it went uh bankrupt, if I'm not mistaken. And it was up for sale and uh um Howard Heinz Endowment uh was able to uh take advantage of that sale and purchase the building and to convert it to a Symphony Hall. So, um, this project uh is to repair the terracotta and replace uh the monumental windows and update uh the decorative facade lighting. Next slide, please. So, uh, we've in an effort to try to understand the criteria that would be uh germane to approval on this project. We started with the uh design guidelines and just uh we're, we'd like to provide about a three or four uh slide review of uh the Penn Liberty Historic District Guidelines. Now, it's interesting because uh, well, let's go on to uh and then we'll talk specifically about the terracotta replacement, then the window replacement, and then the decorative lighting. So there's a uh, a, a general theme in the design guidelines uh to make every reasonable effort uh to provide a compatible use uh and uh also requiring minimum alterations of the building. And essentially, we are, we've taken uh on this project uh I, I think a pretty significant effort to try to replicate the existing conditions. Uh, so we can come back to these uh guidelines. I don't think at this point, um, uh, I, unless you would prefer for us to drill into it, uh, I don't think that uh we have to get this granular. Um, could we go to the next slide, please? Uh, essentially, we have uh uh copied the guidelines onto these slides and uh let's go to the next slide as well. And the next slide. And uh we'll go on to the next slide. Uh, sorry, how about the next one? Okay. So, uh, we'll go into uh uh, the terracotta replacement. We are in this project replacing a hundred and sixty pieces of terracotta, which is uh a significant terracotta remediation job. Um, we're we're aligned with Boston Valley, which is a manufacturer of historic terracotta. And they have been out here with uh portable uh cloud devices and have we've cut out pieces uh of the terracotta in which they're going to replicate and make molds from. And then uh fire them and we've uh selected glazings that will match the existing uh uh, project. Our uh, we have uh a historic representative on our team, Teresa Duff. And I don't know if she is was able to join us today. She may have had difficulty uh logging in. I'm, I'm uncertain if she is here. But uh let's go to the next slide, please. This is the uh existing footprint of the building. Uh, the garden is in the lower left-hand corner. And then the hall is in that upper area that has the diagonal slashes around the perimeter. Um, the uh blue line represents where there will be scaffold uh erected. And there's a, a layer of uh uh protection scaffolding at the sidewalk so that the sidewalk will be in operation during the uh construction process. One of the interesting things with Heinz Hall is that the uh construction duration is very uh short. It's about two months, two and a half months. And so all this work we are striving to uh have accomplished between, um, it would be, I think the scaffold is uh set to be erected towards the end of June and by the end of September, I believe the primary work is, will, is scheduled to be uh finished. Now, we can't uh during this specific two-month period, the uh Sixth Avenue facade has to be fully operational on either side of that period uh so that the Symphony can continue to function. Could we go to the next slide, please? This is uh part of the uh, this is the Sixth Street uh entrance. And as you can see, uh, our work uh is in where their dash lines are in terms of uh the replacement of the terracotta. The uh the double windows that you're looking at are the windows that are slated also for replacement. Um, the center window that's arched is uh referred to as the Alcoa Window. And I believe it was funded by the Alcoa Corporation um, back at the time of the uh, in the sixties. Could we go on to the next slide, please? And then to the right uh of the image that you're seeing are uh, where the primary just uh terracotta replacements would take place on the Penn Avenue side and, and the windows as well. So, uh, let's go to the next slide, please. We have, I think, sixteen sheets of drawings uh that show uh the, this level of detail in terms of uh identifying each uh replacement uh terracotta piece. And this was in order to establish our contract. Let's go to the next slide, please. These were uh some of the, I think that we had forty-three different profiles, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we can go to the next slide. This was a craftsman from the Boston Valley uh uh terracotta uh uh manufacturer. And what is very interesting about terracotta is that it shrinks when you fire it. And so that the, the uh existing patterns that are created from the existing pieces have to actually be increased in size by um exactly seventeen percent. And there's seventeen percent shrinkage so that when they fire these and re-glaze them, that they'll be the same size that they were when they, they originally did. It's quite an art that uh in order to create the uh or recreate the existing uh profiles. Let's, uh, if we could move to the next slide, please. This uh uh is a, a statement of uh the history of Boston Valley uh terracotta works. We can go to the next, next slide, please. Let's go on to the next one here. We're moving into the windows and I'd like to just uh point out a couple of things that we're looking at here. The uh image on the, on the left is the Lowe's Theater um that uh at the time, uh, this was in the six uh sixties, right before it shut down. Uh, there's a marquee, as you can see on the bottom there. The original marquee actually was on the corner of that building and it projected out about eight feet and literally was the height of the entire building. And that, that evidently was uh removed by the uh, the time this photograph was taken. But you can see also that there, there were uh bronze spandrel panels here in the Lowe's Theater with Chicago-style windows that had uh flanking double-hung windows uh with uh uh fixed glazed panels in the center. Um, and then during the uh conversion to the uh Performing Arts Center, those windows were then transformed into a style that's more uh representative of something that you would find in, in Venice, actually. And they, they had its own historical uh in- interpretation from the original building. And I think this is interesting because as we think about what uh is an appropriate historic response, you know, I think that we would most likely try to match the images that were created at the time of the uh Performing Arts Center conversion back in the seventies, um, rather than trying to replicate the, the theater that was uh created in the twenties. So um, I, I, I'm hoping that you find this some, somewhat of interest anyway. At, as you can see on the, the picture on uh, on the right, there's the Alcoa Window. And then I believe it was around uh nineteen eighty that there was an annex building that was put on here that flanked the Alcoa Window. And that's the image that would be uh the, the low building to the uh right of the Alcoa Window. So let's go to the next slide, please. We have an archive of uh original drawings. Uh, these were the drawings from the seventies. And I, our firm was actually blessed with the the opportunity to uh draw up and design the original uh uh conversion from the theater to the uh Performing Arts Center. And these are the drawings of the existing windows that we were uh that we are planning on replacing. And we have uh the details. Let's go to the next slide, please. These windows are drawn to the same scale and dimensions that the original that windows from the seventies are drawn. Now, the, the question is, is, you know, why are we replacing the windows from the seventies? And their uh, their uh casement windows that are single pane, all metal and they're not thermally broken. And so the offices are actually uh uncomfortable with, there's so much convection of your body heat through the windows right now and air movement that it was determined it would be best to replace these with high-efficiency uh thermally broken windows. And um, again, care was taken so that we actually are matching the profiles and the dimensions of the original windows. Now, uh, and uh we can, we can move on from here, if you like. The windows that we've chosen are uh provided by a manufacturer called Wassa, and these are a special window that they have designed that have been used in many uh you know, large governmental uh historic preservation jobs. There's, and they are uh very respected and the folks have been really helpful uh with us developing the, the uh response and the the uh interventions that we're proposing. Let's go to the next slide. We, I think we have several slides here. These are more of the, the window profiles and uh, we had some profiles that were custom-generated just for uh the replacement of these windows so that we could match them. Uh, we could go to the next slide, please. Um, and then it came to uh a selection of the glazing. And the, the current selection is a uh product called OptiGray on one panel. And then it has solar band reflection uh uh coatings on, on other sides of the, the panels. But it's a, it's a dual dual uh uh pane uh glazing. And uh with uh, we split the windows in half so that there, there are one large panel instead of multiple small panels. And that is to increase the thermal performance. And the glass that we chose was a uh glass that was not uh, it has an iron content, so there, there's a slight greenish hue to it. But the, the OptiGray coating um tends to minimize that uh kind of green tint reflection that you often see in, in uh clear glasses. If we can uh move on, as you can see, the solar heat gain coefficient on that is, is uh, it's an O uh twenty-eight, which is a very efficient uh glazing. And it, it's not going to uh produce dominant uh darkness when you're looking out through the glass. It's going to appear to be pretty clear. And uh we feel that the glazing is compatible uh and least intrusive for the existing facade. We can go on to the next uh and then we have the building lighting. Uh, before we move on, you can see th- these are pictures of the existing uh decorative lighting right above that uh twenty-foot-high uh band that you're seeing uh above the sidewalk. And essentially, we're replacing uh tho- these lights with a higher efficiency and more tunable light source. Which uh we actually confirmed the design several weeks ago. And I think it's going to be quite a nice improvement. And it's not, uh, we've gone uh to make this to accentuate the classical nature of the building, um, not to try to create a, a, a theatrical look and overdramatize it. But it's, it's going to read very clean and very sharp with the uh enhancements that we're hoping to uh continue with. So, if we can go on to the next slide, please. The green triangle areas are the, where we are relamping. And uh the fixtures that we chose, they're, they're called blast uh lighting fixtures. And the image that you see on the right is the Empire State Building. And it's the same fixtures that are used to illuminate the in, in Empire State Building. Now, we won't be having as many lumens as you're seeing here, but they will uh provide depth to the existing pilasters and the arches and the, the bands that we have, the decorative bands there. So, next slide, please. These were some of the uh, I mean, it is a drawing um where the, the, we're creating a uh decorative monumental plate and a bracket to hold the new blast lighting fixtures. And then And then we are putting in new conduits and mounting them to the top of that band. And you can see on the right, the decorative profile of the band is been delineated here. We are also, because this is a terracotta band, there are mortar joints about every three feet. And that's, they're, those are called skyward-facing joints. And the skyward joints are known for actually allowing the water to penetrate inside the terracotta. And ultimately, it will lead to degradation of the terracotta. And so on this band, we're proposing that we would put a metal flashing that would be compatible in color to the existing terracotta to eliminate having those skyward-facing joints. And that is part of our work here as well. Could, could we go to the next slide, please? This is the blast lighting fixture. And there will be seventeen of those that are proposed currently. And the beauty of the blast fixture is that you, one has the opportunity to tune the light in terms of its width and also its, the lumens in which it's projected. And we are providing a warm light that would be similar to a quartz-type fixture, which is a very striking light in the evening. If we could move to the next slide, please. Again, that's just some more showing the different photometrics that are available. This is a twenty-degree lens spread, as they identified. But you can, with this light, you can go up to ten, ten degrees as well. And there'll be some locations that we use the ten-degree light just due to the architecture that's there. We can move to the next slide, or next slide, excuse me. And as you can see, down at the lower portion there, above that line, are different modifiers that allow different projections of the light. So we have a full range of being able to really tune it. Our lighting engineer was responsible, I want to call it Mellon too, but it's a building. It always, the name of it is always frustrating to me because I can't seem to retain the name. But we are in, currently in the brick building. But the Gothic-style building, Union, the Union, what is it? I'm sorry, but if I, sorry about the name here. It will come to me, but probably not right now. Anyway, our lighting engineer has illuminated some of the more known, renowned buildings in Pittsburgh. Thank you. If we can go to the next slide, please. These are more pictures of the blast. We can continue to move forward, if you like. And these are plans of where the scaffold, this is actually from the scaffold company. And it's showing plans of the actual scaffold to be used. We could move on to the next slide, please. And right here, the two green areas would be temporary street closures for several hours, maybe once or twice a month, to allow crane activity. And this would be coordinated with, with the city and, you know, and with, with the institution as well. Let's go to the next slide, please. The green lines actually represent the scaffold that will be erected. And as you can see, at about eight feet, you see a line there. And that is, will cover the pedestrian way in, with, with complete wooden over-framing to protect, protect any of the pedestrians. If we can go to the next slide, please. Again, that's similar to, you can see on Penn Avenue where the scaffold would rest. And we have that scaffold that goes the length of the areas in which we may be replacing. Next slide, please. This is just a kind of a quick schedule, just indicating that, I guess it's towards the end of May that we would erect the scaffold. And then we would start the window installation. And then in July and August is when the primary terracotta remediation would take place. And then in September, we do the final lighting installation. And we would close out the project. We can go to the next slide, please. Essentially, this is just a summary. Again, it's terracotta replacement, window replacement, and high-efficiency decorative building lighting. The next slide, please. And I guess we just want to thank you for this opportunity. And now we can ask for any questions, and hopefully we can respond to them.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Just a reminder that this is briefing, so there is no public testimony. This is the time for commissioners, ask any questions, make any comments or requests. Commissioners, do we have any of the applicant? None? All right. Doesn't look like we have any questions.
Thank you very much.
I think you had a very thorough presentation. Thanks very much, and we'll see you back in two.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Welcome. Okay, commissioners, that looks like that ends our briefing portion of today. I'm noting time at two thirty-seven. I think we can come back at three fifty, is that, or two fifty. Is that fair? Okay, I'll see everyone then. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we're gonna call the meeting back. To session, commissioners, if you can turn on your cameras and let me know that you're here. Please and thank you. The court reporter. Are you present? Do we have a court reporter? Has a reporter been promoted?
I have promoted.
We're waiting on the court reporter.
Hi there. Ms. Burton Falk, this is Dylan. I'm Harris. Thank you.
Well, hello, Dylan. Thank you and welcome. Okay, since we've got our court reporter and we have our commissioners. I'm going to move forward and start session. This is the hearing and action portion of the planning commission meeting for March seven, twenty twenty three. Welcome, everyone. Hearing means that cases are presented for action by the planning commission. During the hearing portion of the planning commission meeting, we will take public testimony with instructions to be given after each item is heard. Welcome to our applicant presenters. Just a reminder to clearly describe which slide you are presenting to assist those that are participating via audio. I'm gonna do a roll call of commissioners, just so that I have it and we're on point here. Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dietrich. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mingo.
Present.
Thank you. Chair Mander is not here and Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much, commissioners. I'm going to move forward and read our agenda for March seven, twenty twenty three. And it is, it is as follows. Agenda item A is approval of commission minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is hearing and action. Agenda item E, Plan of Lots. Agenda item F is our director's report. Moving back to agenda item A, we have approval of minutes for February twenty twenty one or February twenty first of twenty twenty three. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review or send forth any edits? If no edits, do we have a motion for February twenty first minutes?
They moved.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. I will go in order. Commissioner Askey.
Same.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
All right, motion carries and it passes. Under agenda item B, which is correspondence, there is no correspondence for today. We will move to agenda item C, which is hearing and action. Under hearing and action for today, we have one item, that is Council Bill twenty twenty three dash eleven seventy eight. That is a zoning text update to the standards for certain HVAC equipments in setbacks citywide. Presenting that to us here today is Mr. Lehman.
Good afternoon, commissioners. And do we have the councilperson here? The bill sponsor, councilperson Strasburger.
My apologies for not pointing that out.
That is okay. I can go ahead and do the presentation and I just wanted to make sure that we had her available and promoted as needed. Okay. So this is Council Bill eleven seventy eight of twenty twenty three. You can go ahead to the next slide. This came about as initially in conversation between myself and councilwoman and where there had been a number of administrators' exceptions and I think maybe even a variance, some challenges with simple HVAC applications are, you know, which are very common application type for our staff and, you know, the typically they're located in, a lot of times in side yards and within side yard setbacks. So our staff often is processing administrators' exceptions. The, the standards for HVAC units, I'd say maybe five years ago were changed so that they are allowed to be within setbacks and not within a specific, there isn't a specific distance requirement, which eases our review significantly because frankly HVAC contractors don't often have the, the means to and the time to put together a stamped site plan that's highly accurate so that we know they're allowed to be in the setbacks. We don't have to require extremely detailed information about the location. What we do require and have, have always required is that they be screened. And so this, this slide discusses what our current process is. It does require an administrator's exception, which requires the application to be delayed for twenty one days while there's a posted notice. Requires an additional fee of a hundred dollars. And then really the standards around where HVAC units are allowed to be located within setbacks are, are not change, are not changing. And, and none of the proposed changes would modify the noise or operational standards around HVAC units. Next slide. So what we have is a very simple amendment. It basically moves the setback exemption or exception from an administrator's exception to a by rights exception. And again, this is just for HVAC units within side yard setbacks and only in a front yard when it's located behind a stoop or a porch, so no closer to the street than the front of a porch or stoop. And requires screening in both instances. And actually, I think clarifies the requirement around screening. This also clarifies that this applies to HVAC units mounted on roofs. Often this happens with flat roofs and requires screening where it's necessary. And again, all the noise and operational standards still must be met and the big change here, of course, is that no longer requires the additional cost and the additional time, both for applicant customers and our staff. Next slide. Another change here is that it clarifies that HVAC equipment is permitted within residential and commercial zoning districts. Not that that was ever a real concern, but we're just putting, putting it on the list and making sure that it's clear. Next slide. And then some examples of residential screening. This is showing what types of screening, you know, of course you need to have when it's close up screening like this, it does need to have some ventilation. So these are a couple of options and then inside yards are really privacy fences are the most common screens and that, that could ease, that could work just as easily. So it's not that, that it has to be wrapped by a screen, just that it needs to be screened from the neighboring property. Next slide. And here, here's an example, a before and after of an air conditioner located in, in the front where this, this is the type of situation where an air conditioner could be located in the front where it's in front of the home, but behind the porch and then screened for view. Next. That may be it. I believe that is it. So I haven't to think further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. It looks like Councilwoman Strasburger is here. Like to give her a moment to speak on this council bill.
Thank you to the, the commission for having me here today and for Department of City Planning staff, particularly zoning administrator Corey Lehman for his work on this bill. I, as I said at the briefing a couple of weeks ago, this really came about last year when there were two different constituents who were facing broken air conditioning units in the heat of the summer, probably the hottest week of the year and came to me and were concerned about the wait time, the twenty one day wait time that was needed as part of the administrator's exception for HVAC units. And was, and we're also concerned about some of the other requirements, the fee associated with it, the signatures from neighbors that were needed, all to replace an existing HVAC unit. So when I took this to Corey Lehman, I was, I was really pleased to hear that there were some pretty easy fixes to be able to maintain the, the, the restrictions that are necessary to be able to ensure everybody's comfort in their own home and, and as neighbors as well. So it wouldn't impact the noise or the views, but would also allow for people to have slightly more of a seamless replacement or additional HVAC unit at their own home. So it seems like a simple change to the code to be able to allow people to, to do what they, what they need to do to make small changes in their home or outside their home. And I'm really grateful for your consideration today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. And thank you to staff as well for working through that. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Application?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Okay, so commissioners, at this time, we'd like to ask for a motion from the floor for a recommendation. Oh, Commissioner Dick, were you going to make the motion?
I was. I moved the
Okay.
Send this to city council for approval.
All right, so a motion is on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner O'Neill, for a second, I'm gonna take roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. We thank you again for presenting and appreciate you being here today.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, so we're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is agenda item E, which is Plan of Lots. I understand Mr. Shepke will be presenting, but I do understand we're gonna take items one and two together. And then items three through seven separately, correct?
That's correct.
All right, fantastic. So I will read items one and two in and then I can read items three through four in. Fair?
Sounds good.
All right, under Plan of Lots, item number one, DCP dash Lot dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero two four three, Grandview Avenue, major subdivision Duquesne Heights. Agenda item two, DCP dash Lot dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero two zero four, Shakespeare Street, major consolidation, a shady side. Mr. Shepke?
Thank you. The first item today on Plan of Lots is the Grandview Avenue subdivision. This is the subdivision of twenty three parcels to twenty six parcels. The proposed lots one through twenty would have frontage on Grandview Avenue and would be ranging from two thousand six hundred and forty square feet to four thousand eight hundred and sixty nine square feet in area. The proposed lots twenty one and twenty two would have frontage on Augusta Street and would be two thousand six hundred and thirty six and two thousand eight hundred and sixty three square feet in area. The proposed lots twenty three through twenty six would have frontage on Shaler Street and would have lot sizes ranging from one thousand nine hundred and twenty eight square feet in area to two thousand seven hundred and thirty eight square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant and the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the Grandview Avenue subdivision with final review scheduled on March twenty first, twenty twenty three. Item number two is the Shakespeare Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of seven parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot one would have frontage on Aurelia Street, Penn Avenue and Shady Avenue. It would be two hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and nine square feet in area. A shopping center is located on the subject property, which is to be demolished and the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the Shakespeare Street consolidation and schedule final review on March twenty first, twenty twenty three.
Okay, at this time, are there any? Oh, there wouldn't be any hands raised on this one. My apologies, Commissioner. Do I have a motion to preliminarily approve item number one and number two?
We do have one hand raised.
We did? My apologies.
Sunny three, two, one. I am going to unmute you and you have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Pat Giannella. Hello? Can you hear me?
Hi there. Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Pat Giannella, G I A N E L L A. I'm the Democratic Committee man for this area where the twenty three townhouses were proposed. And we came, we came before you last time and I was wondering if anybody on Shaler or Augusta were notified of these additional changes in the plans. I thought they had to be notified if it's close proximity to their houses.
I can answer that. There's no notification requirement for subdivision applications.
Well, you know, we already opposed this project because of the contractor not bearing the telephone lines and utility lines in that area. Are they gonna be doing anything to the Shaler Street or Augusta Street?
The subdivision plan doesn't show any information about work being done on Shaler Street or Augusta Street.
Well, then how can I expand their plan without showing you any information? Or, or notifying the neighbors? See, this, this has been a bone of contention from the beginning of the water runoff from these properties hurting the residents that already been living there for fifty years. Well, that's not my biggest concern. That's the residents that actually live there. My, my biggest concern was bearing the utility lines, but, but I've been contacted by all the neighbors on Rutledge Street, which is where the water is gonna flow to down from Grandview and Shaler.
Mr. Giannella, there, there's no project at this time being proposed during today's session.
Well, when would they have an opportunity to object to these additional townhouses?
Well, so maybe, let me clarify. There are no townhomes being presented to us here today. This is just Plan of Lots and it'll be coming back for us on March twenty first, twenty twenty three. You know, these items are either a subdivision or a consolidation. What's being proposed here to us today?
So I can notify the neighbors that they're gonna be before you on March twenty first?
That is correct. The, well, let me clarify. Project necessarily on March twenty first, but as it relates to Plan of Lots, that is correct.
I don't understand. So they're coming back before you on March twenty first?
That is correct.
Will the neighbors be able to speak on the issue?
Yes, they're able to attend.
Okay.
Commissioner. Hi, sir. The, this, this particular application is for a subdivision or consolidation of land. So it wouldn't get into issues around a specific development, which I don't believe we have an application for yet, although I'm not, I can't confirm that. I can check with our staff and
I can confirm that Planning Commission reviewed this, um, a couple of months ago.
Well, this is the one that was already reviewed. Okay, so there was a public hearing on the proposed townhomes. Um, and
Twenty-three of them, twenty-three of them.
Right, and that was the time to provide public testimony. Certainly, you're absolutely willing and residents are, are able to testify regarding the subdivision plan, but that's just a subdivision plan. It doesn't, uh, consider aspects of the development.
And
They just expanded from twenty-three to twenty-seven and then didn't present this on the first hearing where, where the residents were all assembled. Now they're coming back and they don't have a voice on this issue.
Sorry, this is Commissioner O'Neil and I, I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding. This isn't proposing new townhomes. It may be making the way for that, but there, it's not what before is before us today. They're creating twenty-seven lots. So the only thing changing is those lot lines. We are not approving new townhomes.
Yes, but he just said the time that passed, we, for us to speak on the issue was when the twenty-three were proposed to you previously.
On those particular, on that application for those particular townhomes, if there's an expansion where additional homes are uh, proposed, that would come as a new application before the commission, most likely.
So these additional, just so I know, so when I posed this for the neighbors, that, that these, uh, new additions to this project are not going forward without coming back to you first?
I, I can speak a little bit to this real quick. So, um, the, the issue, uh, what may causes a bit confusion is that there's two zoning districts, um, that this, the previous application reviewed. Um, the, the twenty-three townhomes were in the Grandview Public Realm, which was reviewed by Planning Commission. There were some additional townhomes that were also reviewed at that meeting but are in a separate residential zoning district that do not need planning commission approval. So while all the townhomes were presented at Planning Commission, only twenty-three of those were seeking planning commission approval. So as the relation to this plan of lots, there are no expanded number of townhomes within any current application.
So basically.
I don't know if I made that better or worse, but.
Better. Well, so basically you're telling me that, uh, that the residents can't do anything about this from this point on. They're, they can build twenty-seven townhomes. Right?
The application before, from, we've got confirmation from the reviewer that there was an application that is consistent with the twenty-seven lots and it was twenty-seven townhomes and that's what the commission reviewed prior, although they only had purview over twenty-three of the, of the homes because of the split zoning on that lot. But that development has been approved. Uh, the, the plan of lots is what's in front of the commission at this time.
Well, I mean, that, that means that, that it's, it's over. The residents have no more say on this issue.
At this time, the project itself, um, has met approval. Right now, this is not a project land that, that we will be seeing again on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. At that time, if there are residents that would like to participate, uh, in that portion of the hearing, um, you know, they're, they're able to do so.
All right, I'll tell them. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you attending. Um, okay, I, um, Commissioners, did I ask for a motion, uh, to preliminarily, uh, pre, approve, uh, on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three?
No moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner O'Neil, thank you very much. I'll take, uh, role. Uh, Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo. Commissioner O'Neil.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we are moving forward to under plan of lots, agenda items three, uh, through seven. I will read them in. Agenda item three is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one eight five.
I think we skipped over the Shakespeare Street consolidation.
My apologies. I'll
Um, I think you already read it in, so we can go
Yes.
To it. Um, item number two on plan of lots is the Shakespeare Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of seven parcels into one parcel. Uh, actually, I already read this in. So I'm sorry, I got confused. I, I think I read it in. I'm not sure if we voted on it.
Well, uh, we can take them separately. I kind of clumped one and two together.
Okay, did you, uh, I'm sorry, I got confused.
That's okay.
We can proceed to the, the other ones.
Okay, we'll do that. Do you want me to read them in or do you want to take them?
Um, I'll go ahead and read them in. So item number three is the Benchway consolidation, DCP lot twenty twenty-three oh oh one eight five. Item number four is the Hayes Land, uh, con- subdivision. DCP lot twenty twenty-three oh oh one two seven. Item number five is the Republic Street Lot Line Revision, DCP lot twenty twenty-three oh oh one nine six. Um, item number six is the Wood Street Consolidation, DCP lot twenty twenty-three oh two oh seven. And item number seven is the Forbes Avenue Consolidation, DCP lot twenty twenty-three oh oh two oh eight. Um, so item number three is the Benchway Consolidation. This is the consolidation of four lots into one lot. The proposed lot would have frontage on, uh, Besnet Street. It would be forty-four thousand square feet in area. The house is located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to approve the Benchway Consolidation. The next item is the Hayes Land, um, subdivision. This is the uh, subdivision of three parcels into two parcels. The proposed parcel A would have frontage on Hayes Glen Street. It would be five hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and seven square feet in area. The proposed parcel B would have frontage on Hayes Glen Street. It would be sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-eight square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant and this is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the Planning Commission on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Staff's recommended motion is to approve the Hayes Land Consolidation. The next item is the Republic Street Lot Line Revision. This is a lot line revision involving two parcels. The proposed lot one would be two thousand forty-six square feet and would have frontage on Finkel Street. The proposed lot two would have, would be four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight square feet and would have frontage on Republic Street. Two houses and a detached garage are located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to approve the Republic Street Consolidation. Or lot line revision. The next item is the Wood Street Consolidation. This is the consolidation of two lots into one lot. The proposed lot would have frontage on Wood Street and be four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight square feet in area. Two subject, two structures are located on the subject property and the, uh, recommended motion is to approve the Wood Street Consolidation. And the last item is the Forbes Avenue Consolidation. This is the consolidation of two lots into one lot. The proposed lot would have frontage on Forbes Avenue and be three thousand four hundred and sixty-five square feet in area. Two structures are located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to approve the Forbes Avenue Consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke, for reading all of those in. Um, at this time, are there any hands raised based on agenda items under plan of lots, three, uh, through seven?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, Commissioners, at this time, do we have a motion to approve items three through seven under plan of lots?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Askey. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Mingo.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo. I, uh, will do roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neil.
Abstain.
Okay, um, motion, uh, passes and we will move on to, uh, agenda item F under Director's Report. There is no Director's Report today?
Uh, that's right. I wasn't sure if Andrew was coming on. Uh, Andrew is in another meeting. There is not.
Okay, well, uh, we appreciate you and we know you guys are working on some, uh, good stuff, uh, here coming up. Uh, so Commissioners, that looks like, uh, we are done with session today for March seven, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. A second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Askey, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good stuff. Thank you very much for